How are you?
I'm doing alright.
See ya, how things going? Staying staying busy?
Yeah, that's not bad.
Didn't I see? I see a picture, your class or something in somewhere paper?
Yeah, I think it's called just Pope or something on social media.
Maybe that's what it is, yeah. Well, that's good. Couple of things even.
Starting here, get a romantic, romantic atmosphere.
That's where we're going.
Did I miss the demo?
Yeah, how come the lights are so dim?
Yeah, nobody's just looking. But back there. Look for more armor.
Should remember.
I am in serious danger of, of, so if I start sliding out of my chair, somebody coming.
Are you on drugs or something?
No, I'm just, I am just.
It's been. A lot going on.
Having a day, huh?
For you guys. Uh, I haven't yet, but I'm just driving by it. What? Oh, yeah.
Back, you're killing me. It's been tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, all my warranties are off now, so.
I hear you.
It was great. I started having upstairs.
On my, my back, you see what it's? It's, it's when I, it's when I move, I mean, like getting up out of a chair or getting up out of bed. I'm fine, right? I'm sitting on, sitting down and the one I somehow when I move. Well, I've got a point. They convinced me I better do something, so.
Yeah, and they'll stick these little electrodes on me and shock it.
Oh, really?
So good after.
I, I hope that's the case. I always worry about him, about it's making it worse. Well, I'm sure.
I drive by too much to stand this round too.
See how they do. Well, you have to.
ETA. I told one kid.
Physical therapist assistant. And so.
Still didn't have any.
She has.
And I just told him, I said, hey.
The guy that's gonna work on me tomorrow is not gonna kill himself.
I told him.
She lives in Mount Falls.
To say she's close enough, he could come over.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, she works on five cases. She has, she has hip sometimes. She'll come over.
Yeah.
And worker, worker hips over.
That's always good. We need to be putting more on them.
Dirty.
Bart, how are you? Good.
How are you doing?
Good. Good.
Gonna try to do the front ones off.
Start, Bart, have you started with the wrecking ball yet?
We had the first two.
Have you started with the wrecking ball yet?
I just, you know, get it too romantic.
You started with the wrecking ball yet?
Well. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Not at all. Not at all. You've been here before. You know, you know what it's like.
Just sit up straight, pay attention.
Who was the mayor when you were?
Sean was, yeah.
Sean was?
One of those guys were there for years.
Yeah.
You offer your opening prayer for us, please.
Said that was plenty.
Oh, this was. This is normal. Your turn to do the pledge. Next time. Time is it? Are we? Time to go? Oh, it is time to go. Past time. Alright. Test, test. Hello, welcome everybody. Glad to have you here for this Rexburg City Council meeting of December the third, twenty twenty five. Second to the last meeting of the year for this year, so. Uh, we'd like to start out our meeting this evening with a, with an invocation and a pledge allegiance to the flag. So I've asked Councilmember Johnson to offer the invocation for us, after which. Councilmember Colin Erickson, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, thank you.
My family, father, we're so thankful for this day and the chance that we have to be here. We're thankful for the snow that we've gotten. We're thankful for the beautiful community that we live in and for all the residents that live here and for everyone who works to keep our city running. We ask you to please bless us tonight that we can have safety and that we can discuss with sound minds and make sound decisions. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Hey, Sam. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you very much. No, that's not mine. I don't know. Oh, this is yours. That's kind of a panicky moment when your phone disappears, isn't it? Alright, we'll move on to item number two, which is the roll call, roll call of council members. Mary, I know if you would do that, please.
Here. Here.
Here.
He's, he's online. He probably muted for a minute, but.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you being online with us tonight. Okay, thank you very much. We've got a full council and so we will proceed. Um, we had, or we have, item number three is again Eagle Scout project presentation for work that was done down at Eagle Park, but I don't see our. Eagle Scout present here tonight, so maybe we'll.
We just have like the, the pictures because he had a award party or something.
Okay, so we want to just show those and call it good then?
I, I think so. That was what John was telling me to do, so.
Okay, alright. Well, there we are. So we had another, Thomas Die, who is. Uh, the son of Virginia and Paul Die. Did this for us for his Eagle project. They. Took these tables and I don't know if he built them or if he just refinished them. Do you, do you know on that for sure? I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if he, if he actually built these or just took the old ones and refinished them. That's kind of maybe what it looks like. I'll have to talk to him and find out a little bit more about it. And I'll, I'll talk to his parents and see if, if he wants to come one night and we can thank him for it in person too, so. We'll see where we go from there, but it is nice to have these, uh, these young, young, young boys doing Eagle projects. Again, it seems like those kind of faded out for a while, but we've got a troop in town that is fairly active and they're doing some of these projects again, which is always kind of nice. And they, they do a lot of things that our parks department just has a hard time getting to because of time constraints and stuff, so we really appreciate. The work that's done by these, these young men. Okay, thank you, Deborah. Appreciate that. Alright, let's move on to item number four, which is a time for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda for tonight. We ask you to limit your time to three minutes and if there are anyone who would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. And let us know what you might be, uh, what would like to let us know. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments at this time? Anyone online? Besides Council President Walker?
No, Mary, there's no one online that's asking a question.
Okay, hearing none, we will move on to item number five, which is our staff reports. We'll start with our finance report with our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Alright, good evening. So this first one I'm gonna hit is, um, we've been working with BYU Idaho for probably about the last year. And we did have this in our budget for fiscal year twenty five, but we just didn't quite get it done. So if you look right here, this, Deborah's gonna go ahead and highlight the one you're on there. So this, this is a piece of property that was donated to the city several years back from the Steiner family. And then if you look right behind it, you can see the retention pond and then kind of the bottom of that pivot area that BYU Idaho owns. So, um, as we look to develop this park, the city's park plans, we typically try to do more like closer to the ten acre. Parks for community parks instead of smaller, you know, two, three, four acre parks. And so, um, we were able to work with BYU Idaho and get an agreement in place. And they are willing to trade us five acres in the back there. That would, uh, we would give them a credit for two hundred thousand dollars towards fees like impact fees, capacity fees, those, those kind of things, building fees. Um, and the good news for the city is Urban Renewal has also agreed in their budget to actually reimburse that back as a contribution. To cover the cost of those five acres as well as develop out those five acres in the back. And then a couple of things, if you want to drag it to the, so we can see where the church is there. So a couple of things that we have in the budget and our hope is, um, we're working with the church now and we're hoping to connect a trail. On the west side or the bottom of the hill there where that church property is. And then you can see that road that we would be purchasing and then we would put a pathway down that, uh, put a canal bridge in. And then connect it all the way down to the west to fifth, to fifth. And if you, if you, you know, you guys are aware, there's tons of people that live in that area in apartments and whatnot. And so that's the idea is to, um, transact this so that we can have the five acres in ownership and then Urban Renewal help develop that out. And then the city would also help on the city side. We would use trail funds to help with the trail. And then eventually as, as funds were available, we would finish out that front portion as well. But the hope is, is that we would have the connectivity with the trail right away so that the neighborhood and all those that live over there could, could go over there and, and utilize the park. So really what we're asking for tonight is approval of that purchase and sale so we can close on it. At the title company and then a budget adjustment because we weren't able to get this done last year in fiscal year twenty six. Any questions on it?
Yeah. Questions, go ahead.
I have a question. So I, I'm excited about the trail idea. Um, that's the first I've heard of it. So is it gonna go to the Trails and Parks? Committee soon so that those members can hear about that trail?
Yeah, it can. Sorry, I wasn't aware that they weren't made aware of it, so I don't go to those meetings, so.
Yeah, I think there's some kind of a breakdown. I'm not sure where it is, but.
Is, I mean, John, John is the city employee or liaison. And he's, John's in those meetings and so John could update that.
Yeah, because we just met and then.
If you guys never, have you guys not talked much about Steiner Park at all or? Those meetings?
I haven't, not in our, not in our committee meeting.
Well, that's good to know. I'll, I'll talk to John and, and ask him to bring the committee up to speed on, on this. I didn't know that, like I said, we, we assumed that he had brought that up in those meetings, so.
Yeah, and it's probably important to note, we don't have an agreement with the church and so, you know, that, that connection may or may not happen.
And that may be why he hasn't brought it up is, you know, this is, I mean, this is not new, but it's newish.
Yeah, I just think it'll be helpful because we, in our last meeting, we were even talking about. Guidance.
Yeah.
And so would it be like a trail, it would be its own separate trail, right? Is that what you're talking about, like away from the road?
Yeah, and it would just provide connectivity to the park and through the park.
I think that'd be awesome.
And then just so you guys are aware, we're not, we're not looking to plan like playgrounds or lots of improvements in that five acres just because. That storm pond, retention pond can backfill into that area. And so we'll probably just have, you know, irrigation and grass and trees and those kind of things and in case it ever does backfill into that area. Because it takes, I don't know, Keith, how, how many days does it take sometimes to drain?
A couple of days, but it can be a couple feet deep in that storm. Tension pond and.
They don't want children in that.
And every year it goes into that area, so it's, it's not a area that isn't inundated with, with the water.
Could it be grass, though?
Waiting pond.
Yeah, but it could be grass and they could go out and play possibly soccer or something like that on there very easily.
It's slow, so it's not.
Not flat.
Area down there, but, but yeah, it, it'd just be a nice big open area.
Does it work?
Do whatever, right?
I mean, it'd be nice.
You need a fence.
Yeah.
Between us and BYU Idaho.
And probably the neighbors there too.
Yeah, and I, maybe you just said this, Keith, but we will, and I'll just kind of draw the shape. It just kind of comes up in an angle like this. And then enough up here to catch that potential trail. But we will have to put a fence up as well, just so you're aware. Between their property and ours.
And I, I was gonna bring this up in mayor's business, but maybe since it kind of fits right now. Um, the tree grant that we thought had gotten canceled, we've pushed and pushed on that a little bit along with the group that we got the grant through and, and that. Has, I went to court and actually got reinstated, so they've told us that we, we can go ahead and buy the trees that we need. So a lot of those trees that we'll be able to put in here, we'll be able to buy through that grant, so it won't cost us anything other than just, you know. Maybe whatever to get them all installed and things, but we're hoping to do a lot of that with volunteer work and stuff too in the spring, so. So we'll, we'll be working on that and letting you know more about that as we, as things come along.
Yeah, and I, and I'll probably just mention this, the development of this front area, I mean, you're, you're several years out, assuming. That you still want to move on the Teton River Park first, because it's gonna take pretty much what you have in savings for a couple of years.
Do that, yeah.
Are the, are the Steiners at all concerned that we haven't turned that into a park yet?
You know.
Because they donated it for that purpose.
Yeah, I, I have been worrying about that a little bit because it's been already. What, five years or something?
On the council.
Yeah. Yeah, and so I've been worrying about that, but we haven't gotten any pushback from saying, hey, when are you gonna do this? But that's one of the reasons I, we've kind of wanted to try to get something going here. And even if we don't get a lot of park amenities done there, I would like to try to, the first thing is to try to get it just graded. Put in a sprinkler system and plant the trees so that at least it starts to become a semblance of a park and then we can work on it more. As time and budget allows, you know, in the next few years, so, but if we can kind of try to get at least. Some things going on it. Now, it's good to actually get trees planted as soon as possible because even if you work around them to develop the rest of the park, it's good to have them grow and get bigger. Because we all know it takes a while. Best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago, right?
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there even a timeline yet for that trail or there hasn't even been a timeline?
So we, where we just barely kind of negotiated these terms, uh, we do have it in the Urban Renewal budget, but we haven't went through any formal process for design or anything like that, so.
Okay, any further questions about that? Right, if, if there are none, I would then entertain a motion to approve this budget adjustment for this land sale.
And the agreement as well.
And, and the agreement, yeah. Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the budget adjustment and land sale purchase with BYU Idaho. And the agreement with Urban Renewal.
Alright, yeah, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. We'll move on to item number two, which is the update on the Tabernacle Restoration fundraiser.
Um, so this one, Brett's here from BYUI and we appreciate him. Him and I have been in quite a few meetings regarding this over the last, what, fifteen, eighteen months or more? So, um, so anyways, just to give you an update, um, BYU Idaho has generously offered for us to use the I Center for a fundraising concert. And, um, the way this would work is that they would, they've actually got a contract with John Schmidt of the Piano Guys. They would market it as part of their, part of their center stage events. And then essentially after the artist fees and some direct costs are covered, then any proceeds would come back, uh, as a fundraiser to go towards projects at the Tabernacle. Which of course the big project right now that we're working on is the HVAC that you're gonna see tonight. And then there's gonna be some construction work that has to happen in the basement after that as well. So, so really it's, it's pretty awesome that we have such a great community partner that would allow us to do that. And then in addition to that, uh, once we were able to work out the details with BYU Idaho. Um, we were able to find a title sponsor Beehive Federal Credit Union and essentially they've committed to cover. Um, between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. And so the reality is, I, I believe. That pretty much that what we're gonna be booking in this case is a contribution from Beehive and then whatever proceeds come back from the concert. And so I think it's a real win-win-win for all those involved. And then we have another partner, Pepsi, that's gonna work with all of those groups and try to do some marketing in grocery stores with their Pepsi products. And, um, so yeah, and so to give you an idea, if we were to sell at the ticketing price, uh, it's anywhere between fifteen to sixty dollars, depending on where you want to sit. And if you're a student or if you're a community member. Um, if we were to sell thirty-seven hundred tickets, our projection shows that we'd raise over forty-five grand. If we sell six thousand tickets, it would be closer to ninety-seven thousand. If we go seventy-five hundred tickets, it's a hundred and twenty-two. The capacity is almost fifteen thousand, so it'd be great if I could tell you we're gonna do that. Probably not gonna quite get there, but, uh, I think it's a, a great opportunity and we're just really appreciative of BYU Idaho and Beehive and Pepsi. Uh, for all coming together to help make this happen. So any questions on that?
Questions for Matt on this item? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, and I think that's so kind of the university too. I think that's awesome. So I was talking to Matt about this today, so I just wanted to make sure. So the city is really not on the hook though monetarily.
I mean, we, because we have a title sponsor, no. Um, if we have some direct costs, like if we want to go out and do some direct marketing. You know, there, there may be some costs, like part of it I didn't mention was that John Schmidt's going to come the day before. And he's gonna do a gala event at the Tabernacle on the twentieth. So there's gonna be some expenses related to that. And so, you know, to say that, that it's, we won't expense something, we'll probably have some expenses. But I mean, I'm pretty confident we're not gonna just sell zero or one ticket. So, so it's, it's a pretty low risk proposition to do this concert, so does that help answer your question?
Yeah, but so you can't give us any indication of how much we could be on the hook?
I, I don't, I don't believe that you're gonna spend anything net. You know, your, your revenues minus your expenses, I don't think you're gonna spend a dime, to be quite honest. And so, like I say, I, I think you're gonna easily bring in fifty thousand plus when it's all said and done.
And tickets go on sale Friday at nine AM.
Awesome.
This Friday?
Yeah, this Friday.
Cool.
We announced our season lineup.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you, Brett. We appreciate all the work that you and your, you know, you know, your folks up there have done to help us with this. It's been a long process and we do appreciate it a lot. Yeah, so thank you. Alright, and that was just an update. It's not an action item, so we don't need to do anything there, so.
I think the budget already, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. We'll move on to our Public Works Report with, uh, Mr. Keith Davidson. Item number one on the agenda is the bid approval for the Tabernacle HVAC system, so we'll let Keith tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we, we received two bids, uh, for the Tabernacle HVAC system. Um, you can see the, the differences in the bids up there, but DR Heating and Plumbing was our low bidder. And we're recommending the total award of that, so the base bid, which was just the HVAC system. And then we had a bid alternate for the plumbing for the bathrooms. Relocation. Now, there's gonna be other costs that, that come in, right, for demolition and things like that, that we're gonna have to bid out later. That would be. Probably a budget adjustment that we'll need to make later, but right now I believe we have what, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand set aside in the budget for that, and so. So this is below that.
Yeah, it was really good news that that HVAC bid came in. I mean, that's a lot of money, but. We were a bit concerned that with the way bids have been coming in this year, that it might be even more than we had budgeted, so this was really good news that it came in below. Um, so we're, we're happy about that. Any questions or comments about this? Yes, go ahead.
And so that was all in the budget, right? Not any projected, um, contributions?
Yeah, so, so there are some contributions, uh, that will cover it and, and we've been, we've raised, I can't remember if it's forty or sixty-five thousand so far in prior fiscal years. For these projects, and so that's carried over, that will go towards it. Anything additional that we bring in, like the concert could go towards it. And then we also have a, a federal grant for two hundred and forty-five thousand. That's gonna help pay for it.
And so we have in our budget though enough to cover that without any of the projections.
Yeah, I think we're, what Keith's talking about is there's going to be, definitely be kind of some rebuilding, if you will, because if you think about it, it's gotta be demoed. So you got that whole ceiling in the basement's coming down. We're moving all the old vents out that cover up the windows, so those windows will be opened up. Um, and then there's gonna have to be some framing done, uh, where some of these things like the plumbing is gonna go. And so there's gonna be some additional cost, um. And then the demo, you know, we gotta bid that out to see what it's gonna cost for somebody to come in and basically take it all out so that they can come in and do their job.
I think Bart said he'd probably just rebuild that for us, you know, in his spare time. Just kidding. Okay, so we need to, oh, yes.
Sorry, I, I have more questions. So I remember like when we did the romance theater, um, we started off this chain where we. Approved something and then it led to more and more and more. And so. Like, how much are we talking? I know we don't like. Like, how much are we talking? I know we don't like to talk about how much we think things that haven't been bid out yet would cost, but. How much are we talking once we start this before we had it to a point where it was usable again?
Um, so when we look at the HVAC system, where it's mainly gonna be impactful is on the basement area. Right, so the top portion um in the back corners as we go. Bring the HVAC system up through so that those back corners uh would. Need to be put back in, like closet type areas where they're just framed in, so that. That wouldn't be a, a ton of money. The downstairs area, that's where you could. See a fair amount of money coming in to put all that back. Um, I don't, I don't know what that cost is. Yeah, and I don't, it's not like one of the things that I do a lot of, like streets and stuff like that, so the buildings that I, I don't have a good. Feel for what that cost would look like. Well, and we're, and we are not, we're not saying that that's gonna be totally rebuilt. So that it's ready to be used in the basement. We're, we're just saying that some things have to happen, right? Like some of the walls have to be there. Um, some of the fire protection, like the sheet rock may have to be put up for firewall, those type of things. But we are not by any means with this budget going in and redoing the bathrooms and refurbishing that whole basement. That's a completely different capital improvement project that's on the plan, and it would need to be budgeted in the future, so.
So you're saying minimal budget adjustments is what you're saying. When you say budget adjustments, you mean kind of minimal then?
Yeah, I mean, to get the upstairs usable, right, it's, it, it wouldn't be a, a huge undertaking for that. The downstairs. Is a lot larger undertaking, so, so it'd still be usable once, once we get that finished. Um, but then the, the basement would be the one that, right, is gonna have. Like Matt was saying, we need to budget for and, and see where those funds would come from.
And just so, just so I understand and make sure I've got it out, so this bid is just to install the new HVAC system. We've still got to tear out what's existing. And provide some framing, so it's ready for the installers to come in and get it done. And then when that gets done, upstairs is ready to go again, but obviously the basement would need further work to get it. Up to wh- what we want it to be. Am I understanding that process correctly then?
Yeah, so there, there would be, right, we'd have the demo, so that's not included in this. And then we'd have. How far we wanted to go with the, the frame. I mean, obviously there needs to be some framing happen downstairs, but. In the upstairs to make that usable and that back areas where the HVAC system piping's gonna go up through. Um, are areas that we would want to, to frame in. Um, so that would, those costs, we would have to look at and see what. What that would entail. Now, I wouldn't anticipate that being a, a large sum of money, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Cause I just, I just have to say, I know I've already said this, but to me, the. I don't think the priority is, we said we're gonna use private donations to remodel the Tabernacle and I hope we stand by that because. You know, I think a police station is a much more immediate need and there's not enough money to do everything. And so I don't wanna see this as a priority of having lots of budget adjustments.
And, and just to address that, we do have, we do have the group that is still working on um bringing in some more. Donations and things and, and they've, they've got some good leads and some things like that. It just, it takes a long time to develop all this stuff, but. But they're, they're working still on that and hopefully they'll be able to come up with, um, you know, some, some good plans and. And, and, uh, you know, some, some big donors that, that will help us with some of those things that we need, so. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I need a motion from the council.
All right, so we do need a motion at this time to, um. Yeah, to approve this bid that we've, that we see up there for the Tabernacle HVAC system and the plumbing, so. I would entertain a motion to, to, to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I will make that motion that we accept the bid from DR Heating and Plumbing for the, um, for the HVAC. And I'm assuming at some point the plumbing.
Right, okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Reese. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. So let's move on to item number two, which is the approval of professional services agreement for the River Pathway Underpass at Second East.
That one, top one. Yeah, so this is, uh, so we received that grant um through the state. Um, and so this is entering into that agreement with Keller and Associates. They're the engineer on the project. Um, they're gonna start off, cause what we're looking at, this is the one, if you remember. Uh, the, trying to take the trail underneath the bridge on Second East, right, so we'd have that area. So they're gonna start off with. Uh, doing a feasibility study to see what would that cost? Look like and is it feasible to take that trail under and look at those different options? Uh, with that, and so this is all part of that. I think it was like a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant that we received. Um, so our percentage of that is a little over seven percent. Um, and so this is the contract to enter in with Keller and Associates for them to do that study for, so right now it's. Set to not to exceed a hundred and twenty-three thousand on that.
Okay, so.
Any questions?
Is this, is this covered by the, that grant money that, that we received?
Yeah, so this will be covered by the grant, other than like I said, that we have that seven point three four.
The match part of it, yeah. Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay, any questions about this from anyone?
I do have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if the feasibility study said that that wasn't an option, then what happens to the rest of that grant money?
Uh, so we look and see what options could be available to use that, utilize that money.
So we'll get to keep and use it in a different way? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, to, to an extent. It's not like it's money we can utilize anywhere, so we'd have to look and see what LTAC would allow. Uh, with that, but yes, we would look at different options of how we could use that money, whether. Doing some sort of safety improvements for a crossing above grade. Through there or something along those lines we'd look at. So they're gonna explore different options on it with that feasibility study.
Any question?
I just have a comment. I'm sure hopefully this gets through and they can figure out a way to get underneath that, because you go over to Boise and. Ride those trails and go underneath all those roads and it's so nice to be able to connect that trail system back up, so.
Yeah.
I just hopefully this will get looked at and they can figure out a way to do that.
I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty positive that they'll be able to figure it out. I'm, I'm hopeful too, like you say, that, cause that is really nice and it's nice not to have to. Cross that, those heavily trafficked roads. It's, that's kinda dangerous, so hopefully we can get this taken care of. So, okay, well, if there's no other questions or comments, let's go ahead with a, a motion to approve this professional services agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the professional services agreement for the Second East.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion passes. All right, let's move on to item number three and. Oh, wait, that was, no.
Yep.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, we had another professional services agreement. So this is another grant. That, yeah, very similar but different location, not trails, the roadway this time. Uh, so we received a grant, I think it was for like two million dollars, and this is uh north Second East, so just north of the road tracks. Widening the rest of that road out to a five lane road, so uh this professional services agreement is with HMH to do that. Um, design work and then, then we'll bid it out. So this is, uh, I wanna say it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollar. And it's similar, same type of thing. It's covered through the grant agreement and then we have that match that we need to provide for it.
Okay, all right. Is there any further questions about this item in particular? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve this professional services agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and uh, uh, move that we approve the professional services agreement for the Second East Safety Improvement.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further questions about this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We'll go ahead with those and get them going on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for? Keith, before we let him off the hook here?
Perfect.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, uh, item number six, Mayor's Business. I will just mention that we did have our tree lighting ceremony last night. Or, or excuse me, Monday night, and that went over pretty well. It was our first time at, uh, having that ceremony, that. That Christmas party kind of a thing at Rexburg Rapids and, and we had a big crowd there. Um, there's a few logistical things that we probably need to work out to make it a little bit better, but uh, all in all, I think it went pretty well. The. Skating rink was very busy, which is nice that we were able to get a lot of, there were a lot of people over that were like. I didn't even know this was here, so, you know, it's obviously a big building right there, but a lot of people don't realize what it is and. And so it was good to be able to get a lot more exposure for that, for that place. So that's good and. Councilmember Johnson did her reading there, right? Got that taken care of, reading the book and, uh. Yeah, so, uh, it, it turned out pretty well and I think there's some improvements we can do in the future, but. I think it'll be good over there, cause there's quite a bit of room and, and things like that, so. Um, one of the things we've talked about that I'll just um mention, and you guys probably have some of your own ideas, but. I've, I've heard lots of commentary uh from different people about. You know, why, why don't we build a new police station in the old school building there on Main Street, or why don't we do this, or why don't we do that, you know, and so. I think uh, the, the survey is, you know, that we're gonna talk about later is a, is a pretty good idea. We just need to, I, I feel like we just need to be able to address all of these comments that we're hearing and get the information out to people so that they. Understand better, you know, cause I had a lady come in today and she's like, I got a great idea for you, and that's what she said, why don't you build, build it in the old. High school there over there on Main Street, you know, and it's already there and you just have to remodel it and so. And, I mean, you know, and that's definitely a thought that a lot of people have, you know, they don't understand that, you know, different. Government entities own different things and you have, still have to pay for them and all that kinda thing, so. So we had a good discussion and she was like, oh, okay, you know, so I think we just need to get a lot of that information out there better to people as to why. Why we're not doing this or why we're not doing that and, and what all of the questions are that have come up, so. Anyway, that's just something that I wanted to mention, but uh, we do have Shop With A Cop coming up, speaking of police station, we have Shop With A Cop. Were you gonna talk about that, Colin?
That's what I wanted to bring up.
Oh, go ahead.
So we do have Shop The Cop, uh, December thirteenth that morning.
Mm-hmm.
Need some help serving breakfast. They always ask us to help, so i- i- is, is any of you guys gonna be around that morning?
What time?
I can't. Six AM.
Sure. Six AM and at McDonald's?
No, come to the junior high.
Oh, at the junior high? Oh, that's right.
Fit everybody in the.
Oh, yeah.
There's too many people to fit in there.
Anymore.
McDonald's is gonna serve the food, so we're gonna serve the food that they bring.
Shop With A Cop, six AM at the junior high.
Yeah.
Okay.
December thirteenth.
Yes.
December thirteenth.
Similar to last year.
And you can bring your spouse.
Yeah, Brenda will be there. Be fun. It was a good experience last year.
Oh, you got two there?
Yeah, I can, I think we can be there, yeah, so.
No, okay, Eric, no?
No, I've got a.
Okay, I just wanna know so I can get some other help. I got some other help to help, so.
I'd say I think Councilman, uh, Riggins, we talked about it, if I remember correctly, I think he was available too, so.
Okay, good, that'd be, that'd be good, sure. Good enough.
Yeah.
Okay, but I wanted just to tell us, if you wanna see the best Christmas light show. Come out at six eight, well, six fifteen, well, I'll come out at six, be on Main Street, cause you'll see the best light show. Uh, coming on Main Street in the whole year, so.
Christmas Light Parade, right?
It's a pretty good light show.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, that, that's always kinda fun. It wakes a few people up, but it's always kinda fun for the kids to be able to do that, so. All right, and then the other thing that I wanna make sure that you've got on your agenda is on the, our twenty, January twenty-first council meeting. We're, we're planning on meeting at the Romance Theater where we will have kind of a little more fancy, like we did two years ago, a more. Uh, a little bit more ceremonial, new council members swearing in ceremony and induction ceremony. We will actually. Alicia, it's good for you to know, we will, we will swear you in the first council meeting here. But that'll be just very informal, just swearing in to make sure you're legal, right, so you can conduct business. And, uh, but then on the twenty-first, we will do a more kind of a formal. Thing that's a little bit more fun and invite the public in to meet everybody and talk and that kinda thing, so. So just make sure you've got that on your calendar for that night. It'll be a little bit longer. We'll probably try to meet it. I think we're gonna try to meet at five thirty and uh kinda start out with, uh, you know, some. Uh, maybe a meet and greet for people to come in and be able to visit with all of us and those kinda things and, you know, and do a little bit more. Um, of a ceremonial type of a thing.
I assume there's a reason we're not doing that on the seventh then?
Right, this, this, did you say why are we not doing it, or just because it's so close to New Year's and it, it's a lot of stuff to. Organize and that kinda thing, and we just wanted to be able to have a little bit more time to, to be able to get it done, so, yeah.
You'll have to swear in like Colin and, um, uh, Councilmember Riggins as well because their terms will technically.
Yeah, yeah, we'll swear everybody in at that meeting, but, yeah.
I was gonna say, you did say swear in, not swear at.
Yeah, so, well, depends, it all depends. Maybe a little of both. So, okay. All right, so those are all of the items that I have, so let's move on to item number seven, which is the planning and zoning recommendation to approve a conditional use permit. For a sky bridge located approximately first south and first west in the city center transect zone. And we will let Mr. Parkinson tell us about this idea.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, recently you passed the amendment to the city code to allow sky bridges. And now you're seeing your first application for a sky bridge. The property you can see here is on First West and First South. Uh, for those of us older in the crowd, we remember it as Dr. Passy's office, the one on the corner.
Oh, wow, you are old.
Yeah, I am old. He was my doctor when I was a baby, so. Anyways, recently it was Steve Hart's accounting office before he moved out into, uh, the. On the other side of town on Trejo. Um, the applicant has come in and asked to be able to put the sky bridge across. He's building. One unit on the north side of the road and that will be the men's dorm. And on the south side that you're seeing will be the women's dorm, but it will also include all offices, their workout rooms, all facilities needed. And so their deal is, is they wanted to have that sky bridge so students could pass back and forth without having to go down and cross. The pedestrian way on the street. So they're aware of the requirements that we have passed. And they are asking for permission, a conditional use permit, which is part of that process, to be able to build that sky bridge. The applicants here, if you have questions you would like to ask him, particular about this. But other than that, uh, Planning and Zoning has recommended it to you for approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from anyone for, about this or for the applicant or? Anything, I, I think we talked about it quite a bit when we were doing it, so. All right, well, if there aren't any questions or anything, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and move forward with this item. Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I'll um move forward with the plan, with the plan to approve approval for the conditional use permit. For the sky bridge located at first south and first west.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We will. Excited to see our first sky bridge in Rexburg. That's awesome.
Our first one that crosses our public right of way. We already have two sky.
Oh, well, yeah, that's true. Yeah, oh, that's right, yeah. BYU is always first in. First to get things done, right? That's awesome.
You're gonna love that.
Okay, does anybody use those sky bridges up there? Yeah?
All the time.
That's good to know. That's good to know. Yeah.
Well, I was at a conference down in Texas and I bet I went. Eight blocks and never did get on the street, cross the street. I was on a sky bridge, bridges across the street several times up to the mall. I, I thought it's kinda cool, every, connect everything above.
Yeah, I've got the same thing in Kansas City. You can walk back and forth, you name, cross streets and stuff. It's, it's pretty cool.
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, we're moving into the twenty-first century a little bit right here in the little Rexburg. Yeah, you'd be welcome to make a comment.
Staff, this started in Au- August, I think, August twenty-fourth, and I asked Alan about this and. Potential that we could do something like this, and he said, I don't know, nobody's ever asked. So I know that there's been a lot of effort. Um, in communication with Salt Lake City, with the City Creek Sky Bridge over State Street and. Same thing in Boise with the St. Luke's Hospital Sky Bridge. There's been a lot of work going to this ordinance, so I just appreciate. Staff, everything that they've done to, to help make this happen and, uh, potentially. You can cross Second East with your, with your trails with the sky bridge now that the ordinance is in place.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if the underpass doesn't work out. If the underpass doesn't work out, make it over the line.
Yeah, maybe what we may end up doing. Well, thank you. We appreciate all that you do for our community, Bart. And we're excited to see that happen and, uh, you know, well, there's always a first time for everything. And, you know, this, this, that'll kind of pave the way for other good development things to happen. So that's great. All right, let's move on to item number B, which is the planning and zoning recommend, recommendation to approve a conditional use permit for a lumberyard located approximately ten seventy-six South, twelfth West in the Community Business Center. Alan, go ahead with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Builders First Source has chosen to try to move to this position. And, uh, they feel that this would be a great location for them to move their services. They struggle in their current situation with trucks trying to get in and out. Uh, even the contractors, it's just a very difficult place to get in where they're at now. They're under contract with the owners of this. One of the requirements of that is any building material company that's selling and has a storage yard needs to have a conditional use permit. And that's put in place mainly so we can look at this and go, how do we handle truck traffic? How do we handle the storage yard? Are we protecting citizens, you know, residential, that type of thing from having to deal with that? We feel like this is a very good location for this type of thing. You have John Deere real close by that has a large storage yard. You have RMS that has a large storage yard for theirs. And it just fit the situation. They have access, uh, coming down university to drive in the back of that road. They'll have access to it so they can access in there, unload trucks, do what they need to. And then they can pull back out on twelfth West to get back down that road again. Same with contractors. They have ways to come in next to the building, be able to access, load up their vehicles and be able to get out in a safer, more efficient manner with less stress to the roads and the conditions and the public. So the request was put in, planning and zone review, planning and zoning reviewed it, and they have recommended it to you for approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions?
I just have one, just looking at the map. It looks like it goes over that street to the west.
There is a, there's a private road on the backside.
So is there a lock going to cover that private road? Is that going to be accessible for the trucks and everything?
It's going to be accessible for the trucks. They have a written permission to use that whole roadway to be able to get in and out and do what they need to do.
To me, that's the smart thing because it's right now used, not by much. I seen two trucks down there parked overnight this last week. So I'm trying to go, this would be an awesome place to pull those trucks off, wait to get in in the morning instead of sitting on Main Street.
And that was one of the things that was brought up by the, the applicant. He says, we will have places for trucks that show up too early to pull off the road, be in a safe position until we can get there, open the gates and unload them. So we've had some currently that they either are trying to find a place to park or they park in the center of the road early in the morning, waiting for the people to show up.
And that's why I bring it up, so that's going to stay open for them.
That will stay open and they have permission to use that whole road.
Okay.
That, that's part of the.
Yeah.
But, but we've, uh, met with planning and zoning on that and, and have an access point that'll keep the majority of that truck traffic off of twelve. It'll load from the back. They'll just pull through and exit straight out, go up to university and then enter back onto the freeway.
Great idea.
It, it should be a little bit better than us sitting on Main Street.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's great. Yes.
Alan, um, I'm assuming that our ordinances and, and as you work with the, with the developer, there, there'll be adequate screening, I'm assuming for, for a lumberyard.
They will have to screen the yard, fence it and screen it.
Yeah, for future development. I, I don't know what we're looking at coming out in that direction, but I'm assuming whatever it is would probably need to be, you know, would, would appreciate screening.
Yes.
So they're not always looking at that.
Their current facility is screened right now and they'll probably have something similar just updated to do that same thing. But I guess one of the things that is required is a screened yard.
Okay.
All right, any further questions?
I've got a, a question, you know, obviously that's Madison High School where I work. So I hear students complain about that intersection constantly. But my understanding is it's only busy right before school and right after school. So I assume that traffic studies are all fine with the intersection the way it is.
Yes.
In anticipating the increased volume to move this business here.
And a lot of their stuff is scheduled at odd hours, so it, it's opposite of those timeframes coming in. And they coordinate a lot of that, so they don't have that conflict coming at that same time.
Okay, good. And then I guess my last question is, um, university where it dead ends there, uh, just past the high school where the seminary building is. I, I, if I remember correctly, I hear the county was in the process of connecting that with the next road.
Correct.
Down. Do you know what the timeline is with that?
They were hoping to start on that this year, but they ran out of gravel building their frontage road going down along the freeway. They are planning on the spring, starting on this road of building that through. So then we will have connectivity to three thousand to the west, which gives a whole new alternative for buses, for students, parents, everybody to come into that high school, which should pull some of the pressure off of twelfth and that intersection, a twelfth and university.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. But you don't expect any of the business from this business to come from that direction. I, I don't.
You may have contractors that drive in that way if they're working out west and coming in that way. But the majority of it.
Big trucks, because they're all going to be on the highway.
Big trucks usually going to come off the freeway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And, and honestly, if, if the trucks start having, you know, if they're coming in during that time, and I'm assuming you probably could let them know if they're coming in during that time, when it's super busy, they could actually get off down south and come up, you know, come up the frontage road and get there a little easier too. But most of them will probably come early in the morning.
Yeah, we think that'll work really well. We were a little concerned initially with the school traffic and of course the, the kids and everything in there, but I think it'll work well. Our, our stuff is generally quite early before that. And then of course our busiest time is, is during the summer when, when that's reduced traffic.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's good.
Well, if you're early in the morning, you'll be fine.
We're early in the morning and, yeah. And then, and then we, we're, we're operating from seven to five thirty. We'll stay in that timeframe. So the evening events that happen out on the school, that won't be impactful. We're not starting. I mean, other than trucks, generally they come in, but we'll start unloading. That'll be all contained within the property itself when school's happening. And so you may have two or three semis that are exiting at the most in a day for those large trucks. And then of course our, our delivery vehicles that are going in and out. But unless you had something that was going to be delivering to a contractor in town, most of that is just going to go out, hit the, hit the freeway and then, and then be out of that area.
Well, I appreciate you considering that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there, uh, any further questions or discussion on this? If not, I would entertain a motion to, um, to move forward on this, uh, conditional use permit for the lumberyard. Is there such a motion?
Is that motion, the condition use permit for Builders Choice, this property we discussed?
Okay, for this lumberyard. Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Reese. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We'll go ahead with that. Thank you. All right, item C is the staff recommendation to consider hiring the Portman Square Group to design and execute a statistically valid survey of Rexburg voters and residents regarding the police station facility bond. Uh, we'll let Matt brief us on, on this item.
So Josh and I.
Chief, Chief Rhodes is here too to visit with us about it.
And then also, um, uh, Amy is who we've been working with at, at Portman Square. She was out of the country, so unable to join. But we do have, uh, our financial advisor, uh, Michael Keith that's on the phone. So if you guys do have some questions, he's worked with them very closely and may be able to answer them.
And he's from Zion's, uh, Michael Keith from Zion's Bank.
While we're grabbing him, do you want to jump?
Yeah, so.
As, as it was mentioned before, and as we all know, the bond measure did not pass for the new police station. I do want to extend our gratitude appreciation for those that have supported, uh, the process and have put a lot of time and effort into it. Uh, we, we understand a lot of work went into it through different meetings. Um, and as, as we see that it obviously didn't pass, um, we've met together as our steering committee, including some of the council, uh, some of the engineers, the CMGC, some of the officers. Um, as we tried to regroup and figure out our next step, um, we obviously realized that, that the need is still there. Um, as we continue to grow as a city, as we see, uh, the city population grow and the need for more, more officers, we, we are doing good now. Um, my biggest concern is for the future, uh, ten years from now, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, and figuring out a plan to move forward, uh, with, with the study, uh, that we're proposing and looking for, trying to, to get more, uh, public opinion. Uh, during the whole process, we had, uh, open houses at the police department tours where we invited the public in to be able to answer questions. We had open houses here to be able to have, um, open forum, to be able to answer questions and explain the process. Um, one of the concerns as, as we looked through that election process was the, the number of registered voters that appeared and came out to vote. And so as we, we looked at that, we, we wanted to find out more why people voted the way they did, if there were some concerns that we didn't address, things that we could refocus, um, concerns that maybe we didn't answer. We do, we saw responses through social media. We had questions presented through email. And so we don't know that we were able to cast a, a wide enough net to get the full voter population and what their opinions truly are, what some of the major concerns were. And so that, that was our, our main objective as we met together to try to figure out, um, what our next steps are, what we should do for our future growth as we continue to grow as a department and as a city. And to figure out from the population of the city, what their concerns are, um, their needs, their wants, and how we can address some of those in a better way to, um, maybe reach some of those people that didn't or weren't able to come to our open houses and to the public forums or maybe don't even have access to social media. So that was one of the, the reasons we came together with, with ideas, thoughts of how we can reach out a little more and get more of the public's opinion. Um, we have, we discussed within our group how we could perform these surveys, reach out. Um, and as we, we dug in a little more, that was where we kind of located this company, uh, to see if they could help us a little more to reach out and hit, um, a wider, wider range of the population to get a, a better view, a better opinion from the community.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Matt, you can go ahead with the proposal.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just add a little bit to what Josh has, has said. Um, so, so this, this, you know, as we looked at this, we, we did look and say, you know, can we do this in-house? And I mean, honestly, we do not have a great track record of getting responses and engagement on surveys internally. And so Michael, uh, made a suggestion of Portman that's on the phone here, uh, Portman Square Group, and also provided, uh, several references. And so, and I provided those in your guys' packet, so Sandpoint and Court of Lane. And so, so hopefully you've had a chance to kind of look through that. But I think the biggest thing here is, you know, these guys take an approach, um, they take a couple approaches. They can do it with a postcard. To be honest, we did a postcard. Remember, we did a mailer postcard. We did more of a blanketed postcard to all the residents. Um, the approach that these guys take is they actually take a targeted approach to those that have actually participated in elections. And so they go back and they look at prior elections. So in this case, they look and they say, they target individuals that have voted in three of the last four elections. And so it goes back several years. And then instead of just doing a postcard option, they also offer a text-based option. And they've found that they get, um, much better results from the text-based approach. Um, they've been able to statistically validate the information that they're getting back, meaning that, that what they're receiving is representative of the feeling of the, the public or those that respond to the survey. Um, and I think Josh nailed it. I mean, unfortunately, you have eighteen percent of, of your registered voters that are really making the decisions because they're the ones that actually come to the ballot and, or to come to the, to vote. Um, so anyways, that's what this group does is they, they target those reliable voters. Um, and then they quantify, quantify that voter sentiment by engaging them through the survey process. And then the hope is that they surface those key concerns that, that those individuals had that voted. And also find out why some of the, you know, for those that didn't vote, if they respond, find out why they didn't vote. Um, and then what they do is they provide an actionable guidance for you as city leaders, um, on determining when and how and when to return a, um, this matter to, to the bond or to the election process again. And so the, the hope is, is that we can, we can do this survey and we can get a representative, a true feedback of the concerns and, and what these, the citizens are feeling about that. And how open are they to actually seeing another bond measure in the near future? Those kind of things. Um, cost-wise, it, their fee is, is, um, between six and eight thousand. And so I put an estimate right around seventy-three hundred. And then there is, there are fees associated with the text base. Even if we did the text based ourselves, there would be fees associated with it. And that cost is fifty-five hundred. And then the postcards are fifty-two hundred. Um, so if you add that all up, it's close to eighteen thousand dollars. Um, as we looked at it as staff, we felt very strongly that text-based approach is much better than postcards. So if you're thinking maybe we only do one of those approaches, we would highly recommend you do the text-based approach. And they have found that to be more successful recently with the, the references that, that I named earlier. So anyways, that, that is the staff recommendation. And, uh, we'll just open it up for any questions.
I've got a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
When you said this, uh, the text-based approach, is that mean they're going to get a text that says, click here to take the survey? And then going to do the whole survey right then and there? Or, okay, just wanted to make sure that that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm envisioning that correctly. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and they, and part of the fee, right, is that they're, they're going to help compose that survey. To be honest, we've already started a process to, to compose an internal survey, but they would also do that with their expertise, their experience. Um, and then we would of course be able to review that draft. And, and, uh, it's something that we could of course send out to you guys and get your input as well. Um, the thought is, is that they would be able to work on that survey, uh, over the, basically the next month or so. And then they could release it. They've actually found better success to release them and only run them a few weeks and not leave them open for, you know, months at a time. Because you, you know, you get a text and you're not going to be like, oh, I, I got that text a month ago. I should go back, right? And so, so they find that their results within two weeks, they can have them. And so the idea would be that they summarize those results in, report back to you. Um, I think we meet the twenty-first of January, I believe is our second meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And they felt like they could have those results and present those.
Okay. Questions, yes?
And so, um, when is the deadline? If we chose to have it on the ballot again in May, when is the deadline for us to make that decision?
You have to, okay, I got it. We talked all about this too. I think it's, I think it's early March. I can't remember the exact date.
So we have plenty of time then, you're saying?
You have a little time. Um, you have to remember, if you do put it on the ballot, you have to create an ordinance. And so you have typically, you, you take that through a three-read process. So for you guys, you only meet every two weeks, so that's six weeks. You can waive the rules, you know? If, if you decided you wanted to waive the rules and pass it in one meeting, you technically could. Uh, we generally try not to. We try to run it through the whole process.
So are you saying this would be done in time? Then you're confident that they could have the results in time for us to read it? Because I would like it read three times. I don't like suspending those.
Yeah, if you, if you want it read three times, you would have to have that ordinance presented to you. Yeah, if you, if you want it read three times, you would have to have that ordinance presented to you in your first meeting in February.
Yeah, go ahead.
Which begs the problem, or the, the, the problem with it is, is that if they, we get the results of the survey back, they're gonna suggest things that we need to do to get people to, you know, out and vote and do those kinds of things. There's no way we're gonna have enough time to get the results back and be, and do any action. I, a, any action that comes out of that survey before we actually.
Need to put on.
So, so I'm not sure, I, I, I have a real problem with surveys anyway. I mean, I'm just, the, the, I, I think we ask people, we, we end up finding out what we already know. You know, I mean, that's from my opinion, that's what, what my experience with, with surveys have been. But I'm, I know, I'm, I, I'm for whatever we need to do to get the information out there that people, but, but I don't just want to throw some money at something without there being enough time involved to be able to use the results that we paid for to be able to help the process along.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, and you, and you may get those results and, and be like, you know what? We're not gonna return this to the ballot measure for another year or maybe eighteen months. Yeah. And so.
One of the things that, that I, as I'm thinking through it, I, I think what will happen is the survey will, will bring to the surface, you know, the, what the five biggest concerns that people have. And I think we should be able to address those pretty quickly and be able to start getting information about those five concerns. I don't think, I don't think we'll be doing any major revamping of our plans. I, I think it's just information that people didn't understand that we need to get out to them better. Because that's a lot of the questions that I've answered from people. And I don't know if, if you guys have had the same thing, but people just wondered, well, why aren't we just remodeling the old high school to do this? Or why aren't we doing this? Or why aren't we doing that? And I think we just need to be able to get that information out better to people. And, you know, help, uh, leave some of those concerns, you know, and because they're wondering, why aren't we doing this? Or, or have you even thought of this? And when I explained to this lady that came in today, oh, yeah, we've, we've thought of that. And this is why we're not doing that, or not planning to do that. She, you know, she understood and she was like, oh, okay. You know, so I think it's just a lot of that that we'll need to do is, 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 you know, get information out to people so that they understand what we're trying to do and where we're going and how we want to do it. Go ahead.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it either. I don't, I don't feel like it's a lot of money, honestly. You know, that, that the survey costs, it's not a high cost. But I do feel like, I mean, I've heard reasons. I don't, I don't know what else we're gonna come up with. Location, that's what I've heard over and over. People don't like the location. They're wondering why we're not doing it on Main Street. Why do they even need one? That's what I've heard, you know, they don't want their taxes to go up. So I don't know what new reasons. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I don't know what new reasons we're going to uncover. I feel like I kind of understand why at this point, people didn't vote for it. So I feel like the biggest thing is more education. And, you know, we have people already know now, we could try to educate them. We could use texts to educate them if we chose not to do the survey. And I mean, I, I don't know what anyone else thinks, and I know this isn't on the agenda right now. But I think trying again in May is really, I would be really disappointed if we didn't try again. Because we were so close to making it. So like, to me, I'm fine with doing nothing except trying to educate and then trying again in May. And then if that doesn't work, then we try to see, is there something that we're missing? But honestly, I'm fine, I'm fine either way. But I think education is the biggest thing. And so I don't understand how the survey is gonna educate. We're still gonna have to educate. And then we're gonna have a shorter amount of time to do that education.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, there might be an argument for the fact that the survey in itself might at least raise awareness. Except for the fact that they're gonna target only voters, only those that have voted.
Who already came out.
We'll still advertise it in other, you know, through social media website as well.
This particular survey is targeted to, to voters. And.
Just for the text.
Going out to, to, to the, to the.
Everyone.
To everyone, then, then it would serve at least as a, as a way of, of raising awareness.
Well, and I, and I don't think we're, we're not precluding everyone. We're still gonna be able to run it in the newsletter. We're gonna still be able to put it out on the website.
Still educated.
There's still the option to do it. We're just saying that we're gonna target those that have actually shown that they make the, the decision.
From my perspective, I think having a scientifically valid survey is really important. Because, I mean, in my training in political science, you have anecdotal evidence and it can be completely wrong. Because you're getting four, or five, or ten people out of a thousand. And we can't survey everybody because that's not, or because the ones that respond don't give you a scientifically valid results either. So people that know what they're doing, I think it's important that we find out that. So we know where to go next, or how to go next, or even when to go next. I'm afraid if we put it on the ballot in May, that it could have the unintended consequence of people that were a little leery about it in November are gonna see or feel or perceive that we're just trying to do it again and again and again to ram it down their throat. And, and that concerns me a little. So I would like to see what the survey says. Again, scientifically valid professionals are running it to get those results back and to get as much of an accurate understanding of a cross-section of town. Why people chose not to vote for it, or not vote at all, or whatever. So our education can be as precise as possible.
Yeah, and they, and they do look in precincts, so they give data based on precincts. I mean, oddly enough, where the police station was recommended, they, they were in favor of it. By the way, those precincts, highly in favor of it. The other thing to keep in mind is that Portman, this, this group, they can also do a phase two. And so like, if you do this survey, they don't just do surveys, they can also do that outreach. You know, that's additional money that you would have to agree to pay, right, or budget for. But it, it's important to note that as you get those results back, they do have a whole phase two, if you will, process that they can go through to help you deploy that information, if you will.
Matt, this is Michael Keith. I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I think, I think there's a couple of things I've, I've heard from the, the council. If it's okay, I'd like to maybe address some of those things on kind of the, the why of the survey and what you think you can glean from it. Because it really does depend on how a survey is developed, on what you get out of it. And we've all seen surveys, but not all surveys are created equal, right, when we, when we do those. And so as you, as you think about the why, you say, okay, look, we've, 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 we sent out these postcards. We engaged our public. We came back and we saw sixty-two percent support, right? But we only saw eighteen, or less than eighteen percent of folks, you know, participate. You go back and you do a survey and you say, and it gives you a couple of opportunities. One, you've got an opportunity to create a narrative around the police station through that, that survey. So going back to timelines and things. So interestingly enough, City of Coeur d'Alene was on the very same timeline. They were for their fire bond as you guys are now. It was about December timeframe that we talked with them. It was in January that we ran the survey. It was in March that they passed the election resolution or ordinance in their case and went forward with the election at May. Through that process and, and targeting communication, they got seventy-seven percent support. The survey showed there would be support for about, at sixty percent. And so the other thing that a survey does for us is it allows us to target our messaging. So yes, we've probably gotten some feedback from the public. But have we gotten enough to understand the themes that have said, okay, this is why I didn't vote for it? Right? So you're trying to pick up what those themes are. And, and do they really understand, you know, you know, what police do? I think what we found in, in Coeur d'Alene or through the survey from, from, from a fire district, right? Is, is people say, oh, you know, the, the big red engine shows up and it puts out a fire, but that's, that's actually not most of what they do, right? You know, as you know, with your, your fire departments, those are first responders on EMS services. And in fact, you know, eighty-five to eighty to eighty-five percent of their calls are EMS services, not fire-related at all. And you start to kind of put that narrative out there and you make some new connections with people that maybe didn't understand the services that they were receiving. And so you're trying to kind of weave that in to say, do we really understand? And does our public really understand what we're asking and why, you know, what that need is? And you're starting to look at when you have a, an effective survey on what those themes are. Now you have something you can go back and like, oh, you're like, this is the theme, these are the misunderstandings. We can clarify those and we can do that. And here's kind of a strategic way that we can better engage our public and answer those questions and hopefully, you know, create some, some more synergies on, on getting this, this passed. The other thing is too, is, you know, figuring out what groups aren't voting. You know, like if you, if you do a nice targeted survey, you might be able to kind of glean some information from demographics. And so is there a certain demographic that's not doing okay? Well, how do we engage, you know, that demographic better? Is what we did the right way to engage that demographic? Or do we need to do something else, you know, going forward? And we didn't do a good enough job with that demographic? So I think those, again, in a well-crafted survey is what you're hoping to glean from this. As you think about, well, what's the next step? Should we run this right away? Do we have more work than we think we need to do? And therefore we should delay, you know, and not go back out and say, May, we need more time. And I think that is something else we can glean from a survey. So I think there's a lot of things that we can get from this. Again, in a well-crafted survey, that can be very, very valuable in understanding, you know, the public and where you guys stand with this police bond.
Yes, Councilmember Erickson.
Mayor, ever since I've been on the council, one was, well, I've heard and heard from citizens, why aren't we communicating? Why aren't we communicating? And as I went through this bond process and talking to and been on the steering committee, that's what I heard when I was talking to him. They says, as I was talking to him, they asked me questions and trying to understand that. And I said, we're trying. I think this survey definitely does a vital way to at least reach out to the public, to find out what they're thinking, what we're, information. I think it's gonna give us a lot more than just about the bond. I think it's gonna do a lot more understanding. I think Brian said it really good. What he just talked about is connecting to the public and the whys. I know that surveys sometimes give us different information of what, what we already know. But I think Eric said the best, we can maybe get, get a survey back. We need time to dig through it a little bit, but let's at least do the survey and figure out what we're gonna get. Let's see what the public said. We might look at different options. They might come back and say, we might be totally off with, with the public thinking, but it might give us some good ground bases.
Yeah, that's probably true. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the survey. I think any way you can help residents, like, be aware of it is a good thing. But what I would like to see, like Councilmember Reese said, I, I think relying on data is a good idea. And there's gotta be some data somewhere about cities who try for bond. And then they try again at the next election, how likely that is to pass. I mean, even the, the contractors that we're working with who do this have to have some kind of an idea of how likely it is to pass again if you do it right after. So I, I'd like to hear that. And I just don't want to wait so long that it's not an option in May, if we chose to do that. Because I don't want to shut the door on that. So.
And I do believe the letters that we read from Sandpoint and Coeur d'Alene spelled it right out. I mean, they did very well with information back from the public to help them out to understand both cities. I think we'll, I think we'll learn a lot.
Were either of those, Coeur d'Alene or Sandpoint, were either of those failed bond? And now they did a survey and now they tried again in the next election? Or were those both, they conducted a survey to begin with and then succeeded on their first try? Is that what that is?
They both were that way, yeah.
Okay, they both succeeded on the first try. Though, you know, and, and I think another reason why I'm in favor of, of conducting a survey like this is maybe it'll help pave the way, or maybe it'll help create a little goodwill. Because it didn't work the first time, so what are we doing? Are we just gonna put it on the ballot again? No. We want, we, we want input. We want to hear what you guys have to say. We want an accurate rendering of why thirty-five, if that's an accurate number, percent chose to vote no. Let, let's find out their concerns and see if there's a way that we can allay their fears, a way that we can incorporate some of their suggestions or something else. I think doing something like that with a survey like this maybe can build some of that goodwill and help us along. Because I think most people understand eventually, we're gonna need to do something. So maybe this will help.
And that's something I agree, and I feel like from our side too, is to be able to truly be transparent, educate where we're currently at, the concerns that we're, we're facing, the concerns that we have for the future. And we, we do through the social media, through the comments made, have, I feel like we have a pretty good idea what the concerns are. But we may not have reached everyone that has some of those concerns, some of the voters, some that may not be on social media, because that seems to be the platform that most people are vocal. So that, that was one of the big reasons I was in favor of it as well, is just to be able to hopefully cast that broader net, to be able to get all the information that we can to better answer questions, to help educate. And through the whole process, we, we've, I think, put it out in almost every meeting that we were more than willing to continue to take tours. I mean, we weekly do Cub Scout tours. We do a lot of different types of tours at the police station anyway. But we're, we're more than happy to just show what our, what our concerns are right now and what we're facing and the potential fears we have as we continue to grow. So we, we throw that out there continually that we're, we want to be transparent, open, and answer the questions. But part of this is to know what questions that we can answer and, and best help educate the, the public, so.
Okay, great. Okay, any further questions? Okay. Well, let's see, what do we want to do moving forward then? Do we want to, it sounds like we're in favor of doing the survey. Do we want to just do the text-based thing or, and, and nix the postcards? Is that, what, what are your feelings there?
Matt, one question.
Yeah.
What they say is the best to get the information back from the public is doing both or just one? What's the best way so we can communicate back with the public and get that information? If we needed both to get that, then maybe we need, let's do that.
Yeah, and Michael, maybe you could speak to this. I believe, remind me, one of them, I think it was Coeur d'Alene, did just the text, I believe. And then the other community did both. And I mean, you, you do draw a bigger, throw a bigger, cast a bigger net by doing both. But I don't know, what are your thoughts on that, Michael? You, you've seen both ways a lot more.
So, you know, here's the honest answer to that, that, you know, not everybody has phones, not everybody has texts, right? So, I mean, there's, you know, from a defined goal perspective, if you say, well, you know, can we get to a statistically relevant survey? Doing text-based surveys, absolutely you can. But I think if, if the goal here is to, to really try to engage and, and, and throw a broader net, then yes. Adding the ability for a postcard is a nice add because, you know, there might be some folks that have, you know, blocked, you know, those types of things to come across their phones or folks that just don't engage with that, you know, stuff, but are still, you know, citizens that, you know, engage in and showing up at, at, at elections. So I think, yes, you can get to a statistical, you know, relevant survey through text-based. And that is what Coeur d'Alene did, and they had great results with that. But I definitely think by adding the postcard, you are certainly getting to a broader group of folks in terms of information.
And I, and I guess actually the, the motion is really just to consider hiring this group to, to design this survey for us. So we don't necessarily need to approve the exact amount. We can just, you know, hire these people and then we can decide what we think is the most, is the best way to move forward, whether we do the postcards or not. You know, if, if we decide not to do them, it'll just cost us less money, so.
So really, other than they're gonna have to, to work on it pretty quick here, I think it would be best for them to know.
The, if you just take Coeur d'Alene and Sandpoint, if you look at the number, uh, Coeur d'Alene was just text. They got significantly more responses through the text percentage-wise than Sandpoint did by doing both postcards and text. So it looks to me like, I mean, the postcard maybe, maybe okay, but, but it looks to me like you get a better response through the text, through the texting. And, and if that's what we're looking for, I, I'd suggest we go just text.
Yeah. Good night.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, it's ninety-eight percent of Americans that own a smartphone. And I know, like, there are some people who block that kind of thing that you're going to miss. But I just can't see very many people that get a postcard and then go to a computer and click on, you know, type the link in and respond, like, I'm
Pretty small number.
Yeah, really small number. So to me, the texting sounds pretty good, just the texting.
Kind of leaning that way too. Okay, well, anyway, Ed, the motion that we have is to consider hiring the Portman Square Group to design and execute a valid, statistically valid survey of Rexburg voters and residents. So regarding the police station facility bond, do I hear a motion to move forward with this item?
Mayor, I'll make, I'll make that motion to move forward on approving the survey to the Portland Square Group to design this.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
And ju- just to clarify, with text, are you saying to do it with just the text method?
Do we need to make that decision now?
I don't think we need to make that on.
Well, how are they going to design?
I think you do. If you're having to work on it in the next three weeks, I think they need to know what they're working on.
Yeah. We gotta, we gotta be snappy about this.
Yeah.
We got deadlines.
I, i- if, if we've got to make that decision tonight, definitely text. I think all of what we've seen is text is going to be our primary way of reaching citizens and getting information from citizens. But I'm a little leery about not doing the postcards as well. I know that in the U.S., ninety-eight percent, but it might be a little higher here that don't have those cell phones. And the demographic of people that are comfortable clicking on a link and doing an, uh, um, an on a cellphone survey, we're going to miss that demographic. And maybe it's an older demographic or what, I don't, you know, I don't know exactly what that looks like. So I'm a little leery of not doing both. So if we have to decide tonight, what do you guys, you know, i- is, am I just, is that an unfounded fear? Or, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think it's enough money to, I think, do both if you want to. Like, I don't have a problem either way. I think we're talking about a kind of small amount of money. So.
And that's kind of where, how I'm leaning as well, but I'd like to, you know.
I'm looking at trying to get the most information possible from our citizens. And I want to try to break down that understanding that they keep saying, you're not communicating with us. I want to be able to communicate back to our citizens. So if that is the postcards too, I don't have a problem with that. But that's my number one goal here is to do, to do that.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I agree. I think we're, I think we're mostly wasting our money on postcards. I think that's just money, just, we'll, we'll send them out, people will see them in the mail and they'll throw them away. And, and we may get a few responses out of that, but if you're talking about our best bang for the buck, I say we should send more texts out. If, if we have to do that, spend more money on the text end of things and, and to get more response, and we'll get more responses that way and, and eliminate the, the text. And that's my opinion.
So Mayor?
Do we?
You want me to change my motion? So fix my motion?
Well, let's, let's just say, do we, uh, is there, you know, addressing what Councilmember Erickson is saying? You know, they, they talked about, uh, doing the text, you know, surveys for what they called the reliable voters, which would, would be the ones who voted in three of the last four elections. Uh, can they ex- expand that? I mean, I'm sure they can do whatever we want, but what about expanding that to non-voters too and trying to get, you know, uh, is, is that part of the, I mean, is that part of this or is that not necessarily?
I don't know. I, I, Mike, Michael, would you be able to answer that? I'm not sure that I could. Um, I know that the information that they use for that text is from the information that's collected when they registered a vote.
Yeah, the voter registration.
And so, so that's accessible and available to just say, hey, we're going to blanket all registered, not sure who on a
Yeah.
odd text, that might be a little more difficult.
Yeah, I, I can maybe chime in here because, so, you know, and, and again, this goes back to a couple of things. So Matt, if you remember, we're defining right now, kind of like the most reliable voters. This is essentially what we said when we say three, four, meaning that they've, they've participated in the last three out of four elections. You can cast a slightly wider net and say, you know, a, and, and say, well, not the most reliable, but a most reliable voter, meaning that they've voted in two of the four last elections. And that creates an even bigger thing. Or yes, you can go even wider and say all registered voters. But again, you know, um, given the percentages, we might see a little bit higher percentage. Uh, and that's the other thing we want to recognize, right? That, you know, this last bond that the city ran was in an off-election year. Next year, we're going into an actual election cycle. So there's going to be more reasons for more people to show up. Uh, so there would be an expectation, right, that there would be higher voter turnout. And so I think potentially, you know, doing a broader net of at least a two-four maybe makes some sense and not having, uh, the postcards, uh, but, you know, we can certainly look again at going wider registers. There's, there's, there's a couple of different ways we can kind of define where this is going out.
Yeah, and just to give you guys an idea, two-four, um, they believe that the reach on that is about seventy-six hundred instead of five thousand, and it costs about sixty-four hundred. So if you want to go to the two-four, that would
Instead of the postcards, maybe that might be better used. Mister, um, I know it's Todd Grant, would you please come to the microphone if you, I know you raised your hand like you have a comment about this, so we'd like to hear from you.
Yes, in addition to the, uh, cost of the survey, I talked to the Madison County Elections Office and they said to have another election is going to be around twenty thousand dollars. So I think you need to consider the extra money for the election. And just because you send out a survey through a postcard or a text message and you only get eighteen percent of the voters show up, care enough to vote, what makes you think by sending out a text message or a postcard that that's going to increase voter turnout? I would dare say most people voted against it simply because they didn't want their taxes increased, not because of the location or the color of the building or remodeling something. People are strapped financially already. And so the voters have already decided on this and to have another election in six months, my perspective is that's unethical, it's morally wrong. It's, it, uh, if I lived in Rexburg, I'd be torqued if I had to go vote no twice on it.
Okay, well, thank you for that input. Appreciate that. Okay, um.
Mayor, I
Right, yes, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm going to just move back on my, uh, recommendation to approve this Postman Square Group. I want to still, I want to make that motion to approve them, but let's cast that wider net, like we just said, not do the postcard, do the wider net and go forth on that, the text message, I mean.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is, is, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further questions or discussion about that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with that, uh, with that in mind and try to get that moving as quickly as possible so that we can get the feedback that we need. Um, okay, uh, let's move forward with the number eight. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. Thank you for being here. Uh, we appreciate all of you. Uh, item number eight is calendared bills. We have a second reading. We don't have any second readings. We have one third reading. Uh, this is ordinance number thirteen thirty-nine, the rezone in the Sky Meadows subdivision along Silverwood Lane and Ridgeview Drive from low-density residential one to low-density residential two. Uh, is there any questions or comments about this before we move forward with the third reading? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that we consider ordinance thirteen thirty-nine, third read.
Mr. Mayor, I still move.
Oh, go ahead. Thanks.
Okay, moved by Council President Walker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reeser. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will consider ordinance thirteen thirty-nine, third read, and we are done with that. Uh, before we move into the consent calendar, I actually forgot during my mayor's business, this is one of the other things that I wanted to pass out, these books, when we went to the National League of Cities Conference down in Salt Lake, went to a lot of good, um, educational sessions and learned a lot of good things, made some good contacts. But this was one session that they had, that there was a gentleman that talked about, uh, housing and, uh, a lot of the different things that you can do. So I would like, I, I picked up some of these extra books off some of the tables that were there and, and, uh, hauled back as many of them as I could, but I would like you to read through that if you wouldn't mind. It's not a long book and it's a pretty quick read, but if you'd read through that and then, and then maybe even get it back to me after, maybe, I don't know, can I, can you do it in a month? Because I would like to share these maybe with the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, is, is what I was thinking. But, um, but yeah, take what you need to read through them and study them a little bit. I think there's some good ideas. A lot of the ideas in here we are already doing, uh, which is good. Uh, but anyway, just, I think it's just good for us to, to, you know, look outside what we're doing and consider some other things as well. So, um, anyway, yeah. That's, uh, just an early little, uh, that's a New Year's gift. Um, okay, let's move on to number nine on the agenda, the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting and the approval of the City of Rexburg bills. Is there any comments or questions about this before we move forward? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar at this time.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and enter the minutes and pay the bills. And, uh, thank you all for being here. At this time, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting and convene it in, uh, two weeks. Thank you.